So we have to turn those hand mics off for her, uh, lavalier's mic for her. Can you hear me now?
All right. Good evening. My name is Niva Hatzanen and I'm here this evening to represent the Community Food and Agriculture Coalition, which I've been a member of since its inception. I also am an academic. I have done, my scholarly work is in the area of contemporary food and agricultural systems. And those of you who have been around the block for a while might remember a thing called rural sociology. That's pretty much what I study. And in the time I've lived here in Missoula for the last 12 years, I have worked quite a bit with many Montana farmers and ranchers, helping them, you know, find new avenues for economic opportunity and worked on our local food system in a variety of ways. I've sat around kitchen tables on a lot of farms and ranches and I've heard many of the kinds of things that folks said today about the economic challenges that agriculture faces. And I totally hear that. And I could talk you silly, tell you about why I think that's occurring in terms of how agriculture has developed historically in the United States and what has led to that problem. And yet, because I eat, how many people eat? Right? We all eat. Because I eat, I cannot say, "Oh, you know, I don't want to find solutions." You gotta find some solutions. And that's really where we're coming from. CFAC is incredibly grateful to the Planning Board and to the Rural Initiative staff and the county commissioners that have finally put this on the public agenda and really taking it seriously tonight. As I walked in here, I was a little nervous, but as I listened to all of you, I thought, you know, these are the people in my community, we can come up with solutions that work for all of us. And so I'm actually really excited because this is a conversation that needs to happen. Missoula County has recognized this problem with the loss of agricultural land for over 30 years. And yet, the county has not done anything systematic to really address that issue when it comes to subdivisions. It's done a great job with the open space bond and voluntary conservation easements, but very little has happened. And so, as a result, what's actually happened is we haven't done anything. And so what I'm going to tell you about tonight is a report that is based on data. I am a scientist. I teach research methods. Some of my students will tell you if I'm kind of a stickler on some of that. And it is based on data and it's based on extensive research we did, as well as input from a number of landowners and other experts in the area of food and agriculture in our community. I just want to credit Paul Hubbard, who's the first author on this report. He's moved on to go to business school and start some local food businesses. But he's the first author and did a lot of the legwork on the research. I won't be able to cover all of the material in the report. I brought along some summaries. And if folks would like copies, I'd send them up to the Planning Board. You can also find them on the Rural Initiatives website. They've put them all up there. All right. Before I launch into the report, I want to briefly tell you about the Community Food and Agriculture Coalition. It was founded in 2005 in order to strengthen Missoula County's food system. In other words, we try to work from field to plate. It's not, you know, some people think, "Oh, we're just about this land use issue." We're not. We're really interested in the whole system and how to strengthen it here locally. Because we are all eaters. And we need to think about food and where it comes from and how it gets to us. We're a coalition. It includes farmers and ranchers. It includes anti-hunger advocates, conservationists, nutritionists, and a whole host of different folks who share this common interest in food and a common understanding that food is central to our lives. It's because of your families, the times you remember, right? There are times you remember you're around the table, sharing a meal with people you love. Food ties us to one another. It also ties us to the land every day, whether we think about it or not. It's one of the key ways we interact with the natural world. Our programs involve a range of approaches such as creating new markets and partnering with local food businesses, such as the Western Montana Growers Cooperative. Land Link Montana is, as Fred Stewart, I think was his name, mentioned, "We need a clearinghouse that connects those who want to farm with those who have agricultural land and want to see it stay in agriculture and figure out some innovative tenure arrangements." It's a really neat program and we'd be happy to tell you more about that. We are promoting other kinds of markets for local food. The university where I work pioneered this. 20% of the $3.5 million budget that's spent on food every year at the University of Montana is now coming from Montana. It's one of the top farm-to-cafeteria programs in the nation and I'm really proud of it. So that's the kind of thing that we're trying to do, help new farmers get started. We're really trying to get at a holistic approach. If you think about it, right, what does local government do? Local government deals with all sorts of things. Transportation, water, air quality, schools, on and on. But we don't tend to do anything about food. And isn't that odd? And this is a really important public discussion that we need to have about food. And we've relegated food to the national level, to the federal government, to Washington DC, and to the World Trade Organization and international trade agreements, right? Something as intimate as food that we put into our bodies every day, we've relegated it to somebody else. So this is really a discussion about what is the role of local government in our food system. And CFAC believes that local government and all of us have a responsibility to plan for agriculture. Do they wave away the light? What do they do? Can you hear me?
No.
I'm loud, I'll just talk. Can you hear me back there?
Yeah.
Greg? Okay. Can't do my Bonnie Raitt imitation now. But we also are really interested in how to do homegrown, literally homegrown, economic development here. And food businesses are a part of that and farming-related businesses. And so that's actually what got us into this issue of farmland was realizing, hey, we might be able to create markets for... Oops, did I skip one? Oh, that's okay. What got us into this issue of looking at farmland was, we could create markets like at the University of Montana for local food, but you know what? The University of Montana would buy more local food if it was available. We realized we can't serve those markets. We need more farmers. We need to be sure that we have farmland. And that's really why we're in this sort of painful land use issue, right? Why would I care about this issue? I could do something, I could just go teach, right? But instead, we got into this because we realized without farmers and without farmland, there is no local food system. And there's no security when it comes to our future. We're proud of our consistent effort over the years to bring this issue to light and to shake this conversation into the conversation that's happening now. We also are very open to sharing different ideas and coming up with solutions that work for a variety of folks. We're not going to fall on our swords over anything, but I want to share with you, I'm not going to even read all of this, but these are the central questions that we looked at in order to study what was going on here in terms of food and agriculture in Missoula County. So what's the state of agriculture here? How has it changed over time? Oh, boy. It's too much popping off here. Where are our best soils? What can we learn from recent subdivision decisions? And how much land grazing and prop land remain? How can the community effectively keep working farms and ranches productive and build a more vibrant local food system? Ag economics, one of my favorite topics. We have about 700 farms in Missoula County now and we can talk a lot about that. But what we know is that $7.6 million worth of agricultural product is generated here. We're not the most productive, you know, economically agricultural county in the state. But we do know that county residents spend $300 million on food each year. And we have, USDA has finally started actually tracking direct sales to consumers when farmers report in their census reports. We see an 84% increase in the number of farmers selling directly in just a 10-year period in the county. Almost $200 increase in terms of the number of dollars spent locally. That's, you know, five years ago. They'll do another one this year. What if we doubled it, right? Right now, about 10% of our food that we eat comes locally. What if we doubled it to 20% or 30%? Boy, how much more money could we circulate in our community? That's part of what this is about. This is a national trend, as you all probably know. The USDA found, much to the shock of ag economists, in 2011 that local food sold direct to consumer or through intermediated channels, right? So through one step, like the Growers Co-op, through a grocer, is now generating, as 2008, $4.8 billion. That's a lot of change. Okay. But this isn't just about keeping land, keeping money circulating locally. It's about community. It's about security in the long term. There's actually a lot at stake in many ways. As you know, our heritage is rooted in the land, in our farms and ranches. And so, I would suggest, is our future. Quality soil is much underappreciated, yet they're absolutely vital to human survival. Everything we did today, we had energy. We took energy into our bodies. We did it because we ate something that grew in dirt, right? Farms are also important for water quality, flood control, as some of the folks who live out in Target Range about the floods last year. Wildlife habitat. 50 years from now, we don't know what's going to be happening in this world, right? We don't know. But we do know we're going to have to eat. And we don't know what the future will bring. We've got a lot of uncertainties about the availability of oil into the future. Population, we're expected to be at 9 billion. By 2050, we're going to have to produce 70% more food in the world to meet the needs of the people by then. So, and yet, 25% of the land in the world is already degraded. Okay. I probably bruised Ginny's shoe.
Two minutes.
Go have a drink.
These are, you know, I never drink with my clients.
Okay. Agricultural land, there's different types of agricultural land. They're shown on this map here for Missoula County. Only 8% of the land base in the county is agricultural soil. How much of it's gone? Actually, nobody knew until we started looking at this. And, you know, we did the best we could using data to answer this question. I can talk more about what these soils need and such if folks want to later. But the Natural Resources Conservation Service Soil Scientist found that 80% of the lands containing the very best agricultural soils have been subdivided into parcels less than 40 acres. So if you take the very best of our agricultural soils, 80% of them have already been chopped up into 40-acre or less parcels, okay? So that's pretty compelling. Another way to look at this data, because what was to look at the Department of Revenue and, you know, as we all know, agricultural land is taxed at a lower rate. So the Department of Revenue has an incentive, if you will, to be sure that, you know, wherever the guy is who's growing apples, he's really growing apples and he's claiming it for agricultural taxation. So they actually have some of the best data. What we did was we took a three-year average for the period in '86 to '88. We did that because it gets rid of what you call the noise in the statistics, in case you had some, you know, strange thing happen in a particular year. So we took the average in that three-year period, the average in the mid-2000s, because that was the data that were available. What we saw was a change in our county of lost almost 29,000 acres of agricultural land or 1,400 acres converted per year on average. The Census of Agriculture shows a similar kind of thing, but you can only get this by looking at harvested prop land. And I can explain that later if we need to. Because I do want to, can I beg you for two minutes? Two minutes, okay? I want to explain the proposal we've gotten, why we got it, okay? I'm hoping that folks are familiar with the process of subdivision review. What it is, is if you go in, you want to, say you want to divide your land. All that a subdivision is, is taking a piece of land and saying, "I want to cut it into two parcels" or three or 50 or whatever, right? That's what subdivision is, is to make them into different parcels. The state of Montana says that when you want to do that, you have to go through a review process and certain criteria have to be looked at. Whoa, what are you going to do about roads? What are you going to do about sewer? What are you going to do about sidewalks, right? Are you close enough to schools? Those kinds of things, right? And they say that you need to review it for the impacts to agriculture and the impacts to agricultural water, okay? And that's a critical piece because, yeah, it's hard to farm in that water here. So what happened, though, is for decades and decades, as this earlier slide showed, is that that's never been considered, okay? And so when we started to raise questions about this, we were asked to begin to review subdivisions for their impacts to agriculture because they didn't have the expertise locally to do that. And we would go out to the sites, we'd study the soils, and we commented. We've commented on 30 since 2008. Unlike one of the comments earlier, we have recommended denial in some cases. We have recommended that the subdivision would have no real impact to agriculture and so we weren't concerned about it. In other cases, we've made suggestions for modifications that have been adopted. So it's been a process and a learning one for us. And our knowledge of this issue comes from those experiences. And believe me, this movement's been hard, I've been there. What we know about subdivisions in Missoula County is when those lands are being divided up for residences, we are seeing a much greater residential footprint than historically. In other words, you know, we're getting what my friend Paul liked to say is, you know, "A land that is too big to mow but, you know, too small to hay," or whatever. I forget what he said. All right, too small to farm, too big to mow, okay. So new residential lots on average are 2.7 acres. That's over five times the size of the lots in 1970. The land development patterns are inefficient, actually, right? And they're problematic, okay? We have commented on a number of different proposals in the two-year period from 2008 to 2009. 13 subdivisions on the most viable but buildable ag lands. We saw that, you know, 350 acres went to houses and about 60 acres were left for ag as a result of our input. This can be, this is doable, folks, okay? A lot of the farmland that's being subdivided is out of the grass valley. And, you know, here in the valley, much less up Potomac Way and so on. So the proposals, here they are. And I'll just go through them quickly and I'll let you fire questions at me if you want later.
Oh, maybe we're not going to do that.
No, later, I mean, whatever. Or you can get me out of here, pardon. Okay, so here's the basic idea. Let's create agricultural cornerstones or whatever you want to call them. But let's identify, where are the lands that we really believe are, should be priorities for agriculture? Not all of the ag lands, maybe, but which ones do we care about the most? Do they make sense? Where is agriculture contiguous, right? Where do you have lots of agriculture occurring in the same area so that services can be, you know, available in those areas? And then, the next idea is to create policies that would protect a critical mass of farmland for the future. Not all of it. This is not about, you know, protecting every last acre, although my friend Jim Cusker might say, "Hey, that would be nice." But we know that's not realistic. But what we'd like to see happen is, okay, we're going to develop agricultural land, right? You come in with your proposal, you want to develop it. For every acre of quality soil that's lost, we're proposing that we protect an equal, you know, acreage of equal quality. Now, that doesn't have to be on the site, okay? Despite what some people are saying, it doesn't have to be on the site. It might be off-site. Maybe we incentivize protection into these agricultural cornerstones, right? Makes sense? So you're paying landowners elsewhere to keep their land in agriculture because they want it to be. In some cases, you might design a subdivision in a way that is, that includes agriculture as part of it. Some people are calling this agroverbia. I don't know about that, but, you know, it's like, people value agriculture. Could we design subdivisions in such a way that they would protect part of the land and develop part of it? Our goal is to provide flexibility, to encourage innovative design, to create predictable processes for developers. I could say a lot more about how this might work if people want to ask it later. But let me just wrap up.
Niva, I'm not trying to...
I'm done, no, I'm done.
Well, we just have three other, I just want to honor three of them.
So I'm good, I will tell you later, if you want to ask me, about a subdivision where this work through voluntary collaboration between the developer and landowners and the Community Food and Agriculture Coalition and Audubon Society. Because this is, we already have ways of doing this when people are, you know, motivated to do it. We'll talk about that later if you want. We need to plan for agriculture. And ultimately, the question we have is, do we want to keep agriculture in our future or do we want to keep losing ground? That is our message. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I apologize for going over.
So I certainly can't speak for the Planning Board, but I think you're going to hear four really good reports tonight.
Yes, me.
And it might be worth having some kind of a fair where we just spent the day together and listened to all this we talked about. So...
Five-minute bathroom break?
Do you need a five-minute bathroom break?
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to say three minutes, that's it. Because we're going to start to lose the audience and we wanted to make sure the public had enough time in the beginning to say what they needed to say. And I want to honor these speakers as well. So please, will you stay for the three reports? Three minutes, group. They'll be back.
Perfect.
Okay. I don't think we have enough stalls for all of you living around.
Hello, is that working? Oh, I'm going. Hi, I'm Ruth Blain, and I'm with the Missoula Organization of Realtors. This is Austin James. He's the Public Affairs Director for the Missoula Organization of Realtors and he'll be taking over for a small section of it. I'm here to present today a place to grow, which is a study that we commissioned when we started having these discussions about preserving agricultural land in Missoula County. We thought it was really important, just like Larry said, we need to have this conversation based on fact. Not fear, not intimidation, not emotion, not a dream, but based on fact. What really can we look forward to? So the gentleman that we had actually...
If you move that thing around to your backside or whatever...
Would be better? All right, you're an expert, I like it. Thank you. That did not help. That was live. Okay, I was just touching it. So the gentleman that we had actually commissioned to report was Dr. Elon Gilbert. Elon has had over 45 years of experience in agricultural research. He's worked both locally and he's worked on an international scale for USAID. He's done a ton as far as agricultural development goes in both underdeveloped areas and areas just like Missoula. He also has a degree, a PhD, from Stanford in applied economics. So he really understands what makes sense. We learned a lot from him and we hope that you do too. If you'd like to see the report, go to missouralegal.com, it's available there in PDF. You can download it. We'd be happy to share that information with anybody. So one of the really big goals of our report was to talk about what makes agriculture feasible in Missoula County. And then, let's look at a couple scenarios. Do we have enough land to feed the people that are here in the case that someday we need to support ourselves? What's kind of interesting and I think what a lot of people maybe don't think is that we actually believe in a lot of the stuff that CFAC does. We believe that having students get locally grown food is fantastic. We believe that providing farmers who want to farm with land, linking them, what a great way to use the land that we already have. But where we really differ and where we've never been able to see on either eye is the issue of subdivision. Subdivision is not the place to talk about agricultural preservation. It's just not. If you're talking about subdivision, you're talking about one acre, two acres, five acres, maybe 20 of a huge subdivision. But in order for it to be a viable agricultural operation, I mean, Niva herself just said that... Niva herself just said... There's nothing. Yeah, I'm feeling... We're just going to switch. I mean, she herself mentioned that 40 acres or less has created a huge problem in the subdivision. So one or two or five acres at a time isn't really going to do what we need it to do if we're talking about agricultural preservation. She also gave me a really quick idea and I just totally forgot to do this. How many people here live in houses or apartments? Everybody. Housing is important. We can't forget that. So anyway, we need to get back, so some of our general beliefs are, first of all, that we need to stop looking at local like it ends at the Missoula County border. In our report, we looked at a number of different resources that said that local was five miles away. Some of them said it was 500 miles away. One of them said it was that what you could go in a truck, a delivery truck, that was called local. But it's not just about Missoula County. And I'll show you in a minute real quick. We, in our study, we set 100 miles. We thought that was a good middle number. And it was significant. Also, in our community, we need to look at growth that makes sense environmentally, financially, and for the social good of our community. People want to live here, it's quality of life. And then we also need to look at the fact that preserving agriculture, we need to be realistic. It's not about a survival fear mode. It's just not. The fear-based arguments aren't, they're just not valid. It's just, we're not going to get there. So we can make plans to increase food production, we can do all those things, but we need to have it based on fact, not on fear. And then finally, we want consistent, fair, and enforceable regulations. And that's the most important thing. And we don't believe that subdivision has the capability of providing consistent... And we don't believe that subdivision has the capability of providing consistent, fair, and enforceable regulations. So, this is a hundred miles from Missoula. Kind of shocking. It includes all of Flathead Lake, Helena, Butte, almost all the way to Great Falls. That's our local food shed. Thousands of acres of land that can be grown, food that can be provided to us. I love Flathead Cherries. I consider them local. They're not made in Missoula County. We talk about Montana beef. Of course, we have farms locally, but a huge portion of our beef is produced in eastern Montana. It's Montana beef. It's local. It's nowhere near Missoula County. We love that little truck that comes in at the farmer's market. They're always in that corner serving up some melons. Dixon is not in Missoula County. It's outside Missoula County. We need a broader perspective. And then finally, Cutback has, of course, the wheat. In, in our study, we looked at three different counties, Lake, Missoula, and Valley. In that area, we had four hundred and sixty-three thousand acres of agricultural land. Now, that included all of the different types. A one hundred thousand acres of that was prime or private irrigated. We're not talking about this huge issue where we're running out of land. The land is there. So like I said, we have enough land. We also wanted to look at what happens in 2030. So 2030 comes along, we've been growing, we've had people, we haven't actually, you know, things have just been moving along. Do we have enough land to sustain us? Well, according to our report, we would need approximately forty thousand acres of land to sustain a vegetarian diet. Beef kind of goes on a different line because you need different resources. But a vegetarian diet that we can live on if that emergency came. We have in Missoula County alone, one hundred and thirty thousand acres. We're, we're doing okay. And the, the, I think the most important part is, you know, we've got to stop, we've got to get beyond the fear, basically. Another, another really, really, really big part, and I think you hit on it perfectly. We're, we're not talking, Missoula County gets good precipitation. But only forty percent of that precipitation actually happens during the growing season. So that actually really limits what we can grow. It limits how much we can produce. And at the end of the day, it really can create problems when there's any sort of fluctuation in that particular strain. And we, we know that, we know that there is water, we have rivers. But we're a closed basin. Water rights are not just given to people. They're incredibly expensive. They're not free, they're hard to get, or impossible to get, actually. It's not just about, oh, well, we see the land and the, or the water in the river, therefore it can be put into irrigation. It's just not the case. We also know that climate change is happening. That's gonna lead to hotter summers, probably less rain, and at the end of the day, lower crop yields. We need to be realistic that Missoula County is not necessarily built to have a huge agricultural economy. That doesn't mean that we can't have truck farms. And it doesn't mean that there aren't farms that are working today. But it means that we cannot build our economy around something that is not feasible. And we need to plan on the fact that at some point, we are gonna be bringing food in. It's just what we have to do. If we want to make it, if we want to make it, if we want to make it feasible, we need, as a community, put significant investments into soils irrigation, significant. Food production, what happens when the crops have been grown and there's, you know, farmer's markets are done? There's no, where is there to put the food? We need to think about that. All right, now I'm handing it over to Austin, he'll talk a while a bit about economics.
Thanks. All right, when we talk about planning and what we should do in the future, then we obviously have to look at the past. So, I point out that Missoula reflects actually the national trend of agriculture and economics. We see a globalization across the entire world of market forces, a globalization of trade, a globalization that's kind of moved for less of a family farm and more towards a part-time, as numerous people have expressed, substantive income farm that, that you have to work a full-time job at the same time or be able to go forward, or that continues to do so simply by the love of actual farming and not because of the actual ability to succeed in the market. So as, as we point out, only one percent of the annual payroll in Missoula County came from agriculture in 2007. And when we look at the fear tactics of pointing out what it was in the past in comparison to what it is now, it's not due to a fact that we, that something happened in Missoula County, but because other counties, including eastern Montana, have better economies of scale and a competitive advantage to be able to outcompete us within that economic market, just like our mountains and our topography is able to outcompete and have a competitive advantage on them within, within Missoula County. So, it moves within the trend and it also sticks within the plan. Okay. So, outside of looking for more of the past, then we have to look for a little bit toward the future. So if we are going to dive into those types of fears or those types of things that we need to look forward in the future in order to make a plan, then let's look at two major things. So we have, in one case, complete economic catastrophe where some situation forces Missoula County to be able to completely rely on a local food system. Now, if this was to occur, then we might see that, we might see impact from climate change into it, into which agricultural technology in other areas that have that competitive advantage would be able to have a greater competitive advantage, which we would once, once again have to rely on outside market foods. To our local food system, it could be able to do so, but it would be cheaper and less expensive to be able to use the market where we could actually invest in our local food system and be able to keep them more so afloat. In the, in the next, in the next kind of segment, we also look towards a, a transportational end of an economic catastrophe where we talk of, if that was to be the case, how would we be able to transport, transport food into Missoula County in order to pay for it instead of being able to use our local food system? And as I point out, it's more expensive to actually transport people than the actual aspect of food. So, the, the better economics of it is to actually use our competitive advantage and use our economies of scale to be able to plan for kind of an economic prosperity to where we can use Missoula as land that's preserved for that agriculture endy, but while simultaneously looking at the actual better business of Missoula to where we can invest in our local food system at the same time, be sustainable and, and cost-effective.
So, the, the really big question that we always ask ourselves is, what's the problem? Are we out of land? No, we're not out of land. So what are we trying to solve here? I get that there is a, there is people who want this kind of lifestyle, and that is admirable. I respect those people who want to get up and work that hard every single day. That's tough. But that conversation can focus on something else besides subdivision. It can focus on open lands money. That money was created for that. The community said, this is what we want. So let's build on that. There's conservation dollars out there. Those are the places where this kind of conservation is meant to happen. Not in subdivision where you take a man's land. Or a woman's land, of course. We also need to plan for people. Missoula is beautiful. He's from Butte, I'm from Missoula. We, we're lucky enough to live here, but I'm guessing a lot of you actually came here. So we need to leave that opportunity for other people to love Missoula as much as we do. And if we do create a policy that says that agriculture needs to be a key economic priority for Missoula County, we need to be willing to invest significantly in irrigation, in water rights, in food processing, and of course, the land itself, all of that. And then, above all, no matter what happens, the regulations need to be clear, concise, and consistent. What I get, you get, and that's across the board. So I just want to end on this one thing. We cannot sacrifice those who are producing agriculture today for the dreams of those who want to produce it tomorrow. It cannot happen. Thank you very much for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Cusker, I think you're up. Do we need some help?
My name's Jim Cusker, I live on the working ranch that I grew up on.
You need to use the mic, Jim.
You need it?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Jim Cusker. Can you hear me? Or is it on? Okay. No? No! All right, thank you, thank you. Okay. I'm Jim Cusker. I live on the working ranch that I grew up on. It's a family ranch that, that has been in the family for the past seventy-four years. This is in the upper part of Cass Valley. As indicated by the title slide that you see on the screen right now, this report was prepared by the Open Lands Committee to provide information concerning potential policies to preserve agriculture in Missoula County. The Open Lands Committee is an advisory committee to, at the commissioners on issues relating to the protection and preservation of open space, including agricultural land in Missoula County. The members represent rural communities within Missoula County. And as I mentioned, I'm a member of that committee. OLC holds monthly meetings, which are advertised and open to the public. Concerned with the lack of current county policies, the commissioners asked the Open Lands Committee to review policies in existence here and elsewhere which might lessen the impacts of development on the county's remaining agricultural land. The first request given to us by the commissioners was for our committee to compare and contrast the two reports of which you have just heard. And we were also asked to furnish commissioners with that comparison report if that was done in June this past year. The Open Lands Committee also listened to the presentations prepared by the UN Law School Land Use Clinic. We studied and discussed that report in detail. And you will have an opportunity in just a moment, as soon as I'm through, to hear that report. An OLC subcommittee was assigned the task of researching practices from elsewhere which are currently in use to protect agricultural land. The initial subcommittee report found that most successful ag protection programs use a combination of incentive-based and regulatory approaches. The best options for incentives use a variety of programs to meet the diverse needs of landowners. The best option for regulatory, regulatory programs provide and apply clear mitigation guidelines. The subcommittee was then assigned the task to develop drafts of landowner conservation incentives and also to take a look at mitigation principles that might be used. Good. The full committee review consisted of thorough and often rather lengthy discussions which resulted in the modification of the draft documents that were submitted by the subcommittee. This occurred during the regular Open Lands Committee meetings over the course of a year. Several of the meetings were well-intended by the public. Final drafts of these informational documents were forwarded without recommendation to the commissioners for their consideration. The remainder of this presentation is a brief summary of the contents of the two reports. The numbering of options on the slides corresponds to the same system used in the documents which contain much greater detail. The purpose of landowner conservation incentives is to review programs that provide landowners with incentives to protect agricultural land. In so doing, a variety of strategies are presented to provide alternatives to best meet the needs of individual landowners. The steps taken by Missoula County to incentivize agriculture are also suggested in the report. Now, some of these incentives that were reviewed are already in place and others are not. County funding is currently available for some programs. Others would require additional revenue sources. Listed here are incentive programs which firmly protect agricultural land. Landowners using conservation easements retain complete ownership and control of their land. The land remains on the county tax rolls. These agreements are individually tailored to meet the needs of the owners. Landowners taking donated easements on their land receive income in estate tax breaks. Open space bond funds can be used to reimburse the donor for closing costs of stewardship fees. In purchase conservation easement, landowners receive the cash value of the conservation easement. And open space bond money is commonly used here. If stewardship practices similar to those provided by conservation easements are put in place, open space bond money could be used to reimburse the landowners for protecting a portion of their property using deed restrictions. Land acquisitions allow the owner to be paid full market value for their property. Buyer retained ownership acquisitions typically involves purchase of ag land by local government, which then leases it to provide a county income. Free acquisitions, however, can be followed by the buyer placing the property in conservation easement subsequent to the bargain sale to a conservation buyer. And open space bond funds could be used here. Here are some tax incentives. And I hope that if I say here is something that doesn't appear on the screen, you'll let me on. There is a tax incentive designed to favor the continuation of agriculture. Of course, the preferential property tax assessment and land valuation on agricultural land presently being used should be continued. Further reduction of property tax rates on agricultural land by means of a long-term contractual agreement to forego development may appeal to landowners reluctant to embrace the perpetuity concept of conservation easements. Additional lowering of property taxes could be put in place when owners place their land in a conservation easement. Circuit breaker property tax programs operate when local taxes become excessive and automatically lowers taxes for agricultural operators. This sounds pretty good, but would require legislative action. County agricultural support measures would assist farmers and ranchers to better market their products, providing them with economic incentives for them to stay on the land. And in so doing, the county could do a number of things. One would be, and very easily done, pass a right-to-farm ordinance, which requires the notification of purchasers of residences adjacent to farms about the potential nuisances associated with agriculture. The county could create a local foods board to establish a sourcing program to best utilize local foods. The county could also provide individualized support services to farmers and ranchers such as subsidized loans and estate planning. Another thing the county might consider would be, to provide infrastructure for such things as agritourism, on-farm sale products, farm. on-farm sale products, farmers' markets, and on-farm hunting and fishing. And lastly, the county could provide incentives with tax breaks to establish businesses such as local slaughter and meat facilities, local meat processing plants, and food processing plants. Incidentally, when I was a kid, there were a lot of those things here in Missoula County. Incentives to protect agricultural land during development. Now, even with landowner incentives in place, some development of agricultural land will continue. These voluntary incentives used by the developer may reduce or offset the need for mitigation requirements. The first of these, voluntary transfer of development rights, or TDRs. Now, this action could shift development away from agricultural lands. Agricultural plan developments may include such things as clustering and the designation of agricultural open space. And finally, the county could use a variety of developer perks to encourage landowners to protect ag land during development. Density bonuses would be an example here. We now turn to the second document, mitigation principles and guidelines. This was prepared with the recognition that even if all of the proposed incentives were put in place and heavily utilized, requests for subdividing agricultural land would probably still continue.
Jim, I hold my five-minute thought.
Okay, thank you. The purpose of this document is to provide potential options to policymakers and the public about how to lessen or offset impacts on agriculture caused by land development in Missoula County. It is hoped that these guidelines may be useful in crafting a potential mitigation policy applicable to all subdivision projects. The following guidelines that were reviewed and forwarded to the commissioners are listed as follows. The first of these, if adopted, mitigation policies should be stated in Missoula Growth Policy and Subdivision Review Regulations, providing landowners and developers with clear guidelines in drafting subdivision proposals. Mitigation should occur prior to or concurrent with the impact, allowing some flexibility for possible financial limitations of landowners. As a part of all approved subdivisions, permanent onsite buffers should be developed to minimize impacts of the project on adjacent ag operations. If mitigation land is protected by a conservation easement, it should be held by an organization with an established track record of stewardship, having endowments dedicated to the administration of and the annual monitoring of permanent easements. Mitigation requirements should identify and use an appropriate classification system to ensure that light resources are protected on mitigated land. The N R C S classification of soils would be a typical example. Mitigation ratios refer to the acreage ratio of protected to developed land. A variable mitigation ratio-based system should be created to discourage impact to high-value resources. This system should apply to both onsite and offsite mitigation. The specific ratio that would be used in any project should be applied according to the value of the resource being protected. It was found that in jurisdictions with this system in place, one-to-one is the minimum mitigation ratio used. Listed here are some incentive program... Wrong sheet, sorry about that. Mitigation land accessibility. All mitigation land must be readily accessible and of usable configuration for the resource being protected. This guideline avoids fragmentation of mitigated land and maximizes the future use of ag resources thus protected. Mitigation requirements should include permanent equivalent water resources on mitigation land to support the intended mitigation goal. And similar to conservation easement, deed restriction should provide that the protected land would permanently remain agriculture. If home sites are permitted on the mitigated land, the number and location should be designated in the mitigation agreement and not be counted as mitigation acreage. Previous encumbrances should generally not be permitted as mitigation for current or future subdivisions, but could be considered on a case-by-case basis. The stacking of natural resource mitigation and agricultural mitigation should be avoided to prevent possible conflicts between the enforcement of multiple conservation purposes. In lieu of mitigation fees, these could be leveraged by the commissioners when other mitigation options are not available. The amount of the mitigation fee should be determined on a case-by-case basis. All such fees collected should be used in Missoula County to conserve agricultural land. In summary, many reference resources were consulted in the preparation of the reports. In preparing the reports, we found some options that we did not feel were applicable to Missoula County, and these were admitted by the committee by consensus. Public comments were received and recorded. The final OLC reports include and considered natural resources in addition to agriculture. The final informational documents were forwarded without recommendation to the commissioners. And I'll conclude this big report by thanking my fellow members of the Open Lands Committee for the huge amount of time that they committed to attempt to answer the request of the commissioners in completing the assignments given them by the commissioners. Thank you.
Jim, thanks. Michelle, will you introduce yourself? I'm a professor of... So this is our fourth report, and we're running twenty-four minutes late. Just so you know. But I want to give her the full time.
Thank you. My name is... My name is... My name is...
Yes, it is, okay. My name is Michelle Brian-Mudd. I teach at the law school. I teach land use planning, and I direct the Land Use Clinic. The Land Use Clinic provides free services to local governments in the state of Montana when they have questions about how the law applies to land use issues that they're facing. We're a neutral critic. We respond to the questions by analyzing the law. We don't advocate a particular position. Our students and I do this, as I said, as a free service, so no charges were incurred by anyone. This report, which you can find on Rural Initiative's website, was done over a two-year period. It's not possible for me to go over everything in the document, and I don't want to repeat some of the ideas that have already been captured. So what I'd like to do is focus on the role of law in the question that the Planning Board has before it, and the Planning Board's unique role in the question as well. So I want to hit on four main points. One is what the law has to say about the duty of the county to protect agriculture and its authority to do that. I want to emphasize, as others have, the important role that planning plays in this process. We can't really skip over it. It's a significant foundation to whatever regulations and incentives actually get adopted. So the planning is the first step. Then we'll touch on agricultural mitigation during subdivision review, because the law has something to say about that. And I'll probably not talk a lot about incentives because those have been covered pretty early. So at the beginning, we want to focus on the Planning Board, because that's the board that has us here this evening. And they have a unique role in a couple of ways. One is that they are the body that recommends growth policy language. And the growth policy document in the mind of the Montana Legislature is an important place for dealing with agriculture, both mitigation and incentives. And then again, in subdivision review, we have the Planning Board conducting the hearings and doing the first level of review of the subdivision documents. So the Board plays a very fundamental role, and I think it makes sense that you're the one that is having this particular session. So we start with our state constitution, actually, as a starting place for instructions on what we should be doing with agriculture. And we, as all of you know, have a very special constitution. It's one that's talked a lot about nationwide. And in it, it actually has a charge to the legislature that when it passes laws that affect agriculture, those laws should not only protect, but enhance and develop agriculture. So that's in our state constitution. So when we see a law get passed that affects agriculture, the legislature has to figure out, how do we use this law to protect, enhance, and develop? It informs the way we interpret all of the statutes that the legislature passes. There are a variety of statutes involving agriculture from, excuse me, from child labor laws to conservation district laws to tax laws. They're all throughout the code. But a couple of them deal with land use. And what the legislature has done is delegated to each county a responsibility to deal with ag and land use. So it's been delegated to the county. The county can't ignore what the legislature has delegated to it. So in the growth policy statute, the county is supposed to think about how development will impact ag lands and ag production and come up with measures, techniques, and incentives to help avoid, significantly reduce, or mitigate the impacts. So that's the place where it starts. And then in subdivision, at a minimum, there needs to be a review of impacts on agriculture. So it, under the law, is part of the analysis. But subdivision, as we all know, is just one piece. And at the end of the day, the law is just one piece, right? The law can only do so much. So a lot of the incentives that have been suggested tonight and the community's support and the communities stepping forward to protect ag, that has to happen as a complement to the law, but the law won't do it all on its own. So in planning, I think a lot of these ideas have already come up, but the one thing I would highlight in the planning is... Let's see. I thought I skipped one. There we go. So one of the big questions that our clinic was asked to answer is what, when those statutes we just talked about use the word agriculture, what do they mean? And that question's even come up tonight. There are all kinds of farming there's. And then there's the production of livestock. And what the Montana Supreme Court has said is that agriculture is to be read very broadly. And our report, if you looked at it online, would go through the different ways that we came up with the definition of agriculture under Montana law. But if you look throughout the Montana Code and at Supreme Court decisions, what it says is it's not only the land, but it's what's happening on the land that needs to be protected, as well as to market and the overall economy. So each county in the state of Montana has to think about these things when they look at planning their land use and reviewing subdivision. Okay, so if we look at the planning, one thing that our clinic noticed when we looked around the country at different planning documents is that a lot of them factored in things and did studies of things a little more broadly than what Missoula County has done so far. The county has done the place-based project and inventoried soils, but a lot of communities around the country have looked at other things, many of which have come up tonight from all of you. Like what are our food supply needs? What land is good for farming versus grazing? What is the water supply to these particular pieces of land? What is the infrastructure? Can we get goods and services in and out? Connectivity to other lands? What quantity and quality of replacement lands are available? Looking at marketing and then all those support opportunities. So I think there's a potential to build on the place-based project and inventory some of these other types of data as well to get a more robust picture of what are the critical lands to our community. The next question we were asked to look at is what different places are doing as far as mitigation? So during that subdivision review process, what are particular places doing to offset the impacts that they see to the agricultural community? And here, I think a lot of these ideas have already come up. But one thing that's important, when we saw these different ratios being used in different communities, I think one thing that's important to emphasize is that the landowners who had to protect land when they developed land didn't have to give land in fee simple. It was typically done with a conservation easement. So if a certain number of acres is developed, another number of acres is protected under conservation easement. That's the typical model we saw. Sometimes it's within the property. Sometimes it's somewhere else. And as has been mentioned, other times it's through a fee. So that a developer might pay into a fund that the county would then use to go out and acquire property. So those are, when you look nationwide, which is what we were asked to do, the typical mitigation model approaches. But again, that's only one small piece of the picture, right? Because when communities do a food system planning package, they're looking not only at mitigation during subdivision, but all the other incentives. They bundle everything together. I'm going to come back to this B idea in just a second here. The next task we had was to report on the incentives that we see used around the country. And we broke them into a couple categories. Incentives that keep ag lands in production and incentives that protect ag lands during development. And Jim sort of broke them down in a similar way. So I wanted to talk very briefly about a couple of the ideas so that I'm not being too repetitive. One is the tax incentives. And here, we saw potential for things to happen specific to Missoula County in the area of how agricultural lands are defined. A gentleman in the back said, "I have a two-acre apple orchard. Do I qualify?" Probably not. But that's a good point. If the definition of what counts as agricultural land in the state could accommodate this smaller truck farm idea that's being generated in this county, it could be of great benefit to landowners in addition to the traditional definition. Thank you. So that's, I think, something that didn't come up yet that we found really a great potential is to modify that definition to account for smaller sizes of agricultural operations in this particular county. Another idea that we thought was interesting are to create agricultural protection areas. We found these used throughout the country by different landowners who want to stay in agriculture. They create these protection areas, and they get certain incentives for doing it. Maybe it's tax breaks. Maybe it's special services from the county. But we thought that was another... that was another interesting idea. I want to make sure I have time for this banking of development rights, which was mentioned very briefly by Jim. But here, I'm trying to think of ways that the law could be helpful in getting the city to support the rural agriculture, which is a theme that came up tonight. So one of the ideas we saw was to actually have some kind of bank or development rights transfer where if someone put their land in a conservation easement because they want to continue being an ag operator, they get paid to do that. And then later, if a developer in the urban area wants more dense buildings that can go up higher, that developer buys those particular rights and gets to build higher or more compacted within the urban setting. And it's, so it's a way to keep the countryside more open to agriculture and other uses, pushing the density in, more into the urban core. I think I'm going to leave that there. Another idea that would focus on how to get the urban area to support agricultural operators would be in, in the area of levies. And we noticed when we looked at the county's legal authority to assess levies, that they have authority to assess levies for agricultural education and outreach and support. And so maybe some of the support programs being proposed could be funded in that way and/or some levies could be designed to not be assessed on ag operators. So there might be a way to use some local levies to raise, and Vicky will get, Vicky Watson will get an extra levy with her sheep ox, like, yeah. Okay. So, so those are some things that I think are kind of new that haven't been covered that speak to some of the ideas raised today. Couple of other things I would highlight. One is during subdivision review, what we noticed is that it was very typical for places to have actual criteria, that these are the things that we think need to be considered to determine whether there's been an impact or will be an impact, so that it's very clear. And this is the data that the developer needs to submit for this site. And that that's a very helpful feature that we saw as well. Another feature that we saw with incentives, when we called planners from different places around the country that are having success in protecting ag, is that they had listening sessions with the ag operators to ask them, what is it you most need to stay in operation? So maybe it's help getting water in the field or not taxing my wetland or, you know, things of that nature. The listening sessions helped decide what the incentives and support programs will be. And so those are some of the, I think, highlights of things we found particularly helpful. And in conclusion, I would just say again, that we've got a very unique law in Montana telling us what we need to do, but the law can only do one piece of it. It really takes the community and the incentives packages as well.
Thank you. So we wanted to give the planning board an opportunity if they had clarifying questions on the reports. And again, this is not discussion between the public and the, and the reports. This is the planning board's opportunity to discuss. So, Mary?
Yeah, I'll start. I'd start. One thing that was thrown up there on the board and I didn't get an explanation, I decided to hear exactly what is an agricultural plan development. And I was mentioning two of the presentations, most recently the one we just saw. Yeah, so if you'd be, if you could explain that, that'd be great.
So an agricultural planned community is, someone else called it ag, kind of like agriburbia, but it's a community that in the lot layout is designed to incorporate agriculture into the site design. So that the open areas are often laid out in production fields and there might even be produce stands built into the design of the property. The covenants would talk a lot about how the, the common areas would be used for agriculture and they would sort of be designed to be, you know, like we have horse equestrian subdivisions and golf subdivisions. This would be the ag counterpart of that. And the way it could be an incentive is that if you came in as a developer and designed it to promote agriculture, you would get particular things, perks, like bonus density or maybe certain fees waived or things of that nature.
Other clarifying questions? John, if you have one?
Sure. Okay. It's a question for Mr. Cusker in the Open Lands Committee. Clarifying as much as it is just further information, you mentioned mitigation ratios and that the minimum you saw was one to one. Can you recall that average?
When we looked at the, at the practices, which were, were actually in use throughout the country, invariably, I can't think of any that did not use a minimum mitigation ratio of one to one. Many of these came from California, where it was mentioned by someone in the audience earlier, the agricultural land has been gobbled up and a remarkable rate. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I can, so, so one to one is the minimum, and it's tough to maybe identify an average?
Yeah, one to one was a minimum. And when, when the report that I gave, the summary of that report, had said that the specific ratio should depend upon the value of the resource, meaning that if you have extra special, extra special valuable agricultural land, that perhaps the one to one ratio would not be sufficient, maybe it goes as high as two to one or three to one in jurisdictions that have this in use. Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions before?
There was mention of TDRs, the transfers of development rights. And again, I think that was mentioned in a couple, I think the OLC, Mr. Cusker will probably address it best. The, are there any examples or how many examples did you find where they are actually being used or have been used successfully or even unsuccessfully around the country?
I'm looking.
Takes a second after you turn it on.
I'm looking around for Michelle. Is she still here? Oh, very good. Her report went in more detail concerning the TDRs, and I think it would be much better if she answered that question.
At the top of my head, I'd say a few dozen places have them in, focused on agriculture. Some more successful than others. We, in our report, we talk about Montgomery County saving like 30% of their agriculture base just through TDRs alone. Seattle King County is a, is a city-county partnership where they are, like I mentioned before, pushing the density into the urban core and then the county gets lands protected. And so those are a couple, I think, more successful examples. Montana, not as many. We've got an example of one in Bozeman. It's not an ag protection one, it's a deer, whitetail or mealing, I can't remember which, protection area. But what I think could be a modified version is the banking, which I mentioned before, where maybe you aren't so much, maybe you're selling those mitigation credits. So if, if a developer is told one to one, they can go to this bank and buy the one from the bank. And then the ag operator doesn't have to get into the business of finding where to transfer to.
So Michelle, it looks like me who might want to add to the answer?
Yeah, I would like to add, thank you. We looked at many of these examples that Michelle would mention too. And because, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that because most of our county is not zoned, that it would be extremely difficult to do a TDR program here because there's no actual development rates that could be quantified in that way. And the market for creating these is really difficult. Why, what we are proposing with CEFAK is this idea that we would, you know, identify these cornerstones where there would be protection encouraged, which is similar to the idea of receiving areas in a TDR program. And yet, so there would be some kind of incentive there to protect land in those cornerstone areas if you wanted to mitigate, but you could find someone who was willing to have their development rights purchased. And that's why we think it would be created incentive for people who want to see their land stay in agriculture be able to do so. I don't know if I explained that very well, but it's sort of a modification because, and what it does is it allows the community to plan for where do we want to see agriculture continue to occur. And then in some cases, when it's a really small subdivision, they could just put money into a fund that would be used like the bank and that could be then accumulated to, to purchase development rights in the future.
Other questions?
Niva, while you still have the microphone, towards the end of your presentation, you were about ready to describe what appeared to be an example of your work with CEFAK and how working with a developer led to a positive outcome for, for both parties, you know, for the community as well as the developer. Can you share a little bit with that?
I would love to, thanks, but I'll just do it briefly.
Okay.
This is the short version of a story that, yeah, it's towards the end. The, out of my bag. The, the development was a proposal which you all, many of you probably saw, was Blue Heron Estates. And the developer came in originally to, had proposed the division of 75 acres of land into fifteen, no, into five acre lots with each one getting a residential, a residence on it. And this land is located out in the Grass Valley. This is a slough off of the river. And this was the original proposal, classic approach. I just, I want to get the numbers right. But basically, so it was 75 acres of agricultural soils, that's what the red is, is the prime agricultural soils. And many of the acres adjacent to the slough are also really quite quality soils, but just because they're in the 100-year floodplain, they weren't included in that. So then, basically, the, you know, CEFAK reviewed this, looked at it and recommended that it be denied. And in the process, the open, the opposite, sorry, the opposite planning and grant encouraged the developer to sit down with us and with the Audubon Society, which also was concerned about the bird and wildlife habitat along the slough, to come up with an option as a solution. And as a result, was, this was the final, you know, outcome, was a compromise. The developer still got their 15 lots. And so these are shown up here in the top. This piece in the middle is an agricultural parcel that is protected. And then the blue at the bottom is a common area for people in the development to use and enjoy the wildlife habitat out there. So it was a great example of people working together, the land got protected, the habitat got protected, the homeowners got open space, and the developer still got 15 lots out of it. And I believe the, so the, the part that was actually developed ended up being 20 acres and the ag and common area, the remainder. So the, the ratio, if you go back to this idea of the ratio, is that ended up being 1.6 acres protected for agriculture to one acre developed. And then if you added in the common area to that as well, it, the ratio went up. But it gives you an example, we can actually do it now, but then you want predictable process so that it addresses each subdivision.
It is time. I want to make sure that we're holding the public a half hour extra. Can you do your last question? Okay. And I just have to ask you guys.
Especially you.
Go ahead, please. I mean, you are the boss.
Jim Cusker, you mentioned quickly in your discussion, or you further, that it was advisable to separate agricultural mitigation from natural resource. And I'm wondering why.
As I mentioned in that summary slide, the Open Lands Committee, as, as they reviewed all of these options, the incentive options as well as the mitigation principles and guidelines, felt that these options would work very well, not just for agriculture, but for natural resources as well. And the comment to which you're referring, the stacking of those, it would be rather difficult perhaps to set land aside and say it is for both because of the conflict of interest that might be involved. And so that was just kind of a, a warning, if there are distinctly different resources that are to be mitigated, that it's one way so that each is protected.
So you're not, you're not saying that having mitigation plans and policies for natural resource are bad, but you don't try and apply both of them to the same piece of property?
Perhaps. It would depend certainly on the size of the property. Because it was indicated by, by Jim Brown earlier, much ag land that is protected also protects wildlife. So it would definitely depend upon the size of the land being considered.
Well, we're talking about land that is ag, but would be natural resource.
That's right.
So you're, you're not saying, it's okay to have a policy that addresses mitigation for natural resources, but just don't try and mix them together?
Under, under particular circumstances, where there might be a conflict of interest, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And Jim, you said that was a caution. It's not an absolute, it's a caution. So think about it.
You, you want to remember that. You would remember that all of the options that the Open Lands Committee presented are options.
Okay. All right. Well, then, I've been asked by staff to kind of confirm with you guys if it's all right that they do, we've got the batum of everything that's happened, and by the way, the developing planning board is here filming you as well. So we've got the MPAD film and they'll summarize the comments, the staff will, including the written forms that people have available to them. And they're, they would like to bring that summary back to you. And they also would like to start thinking about some options just as a first cut, to start thinking about those things, would be transparent and be able, people could hear them. Is that okay with you? Do the staff have to do that? Okay, all right. And then the second thing I was supposed to do is offer you some dates for a meeting. And our options appear to be October 16th, the regular planning board meeting, or set a special meeting, which probably would be September 13th. So do you do that tonight?
Well, setting a regular, an agenda on a regularly scheduled meeting, we don't normally set our agendas, we are given our agendas, and that comes from the Office of Planning and Grant. So if it's for a special meeting, I think we have a little more flexibility on agreeing to that. But I would defer to staff.
I believe the, the meeting dates that you were given, not just the special meeting date, but the other one, is open at this point for this kind of discussion.
Looks like everybody wants to do a regularly scheduled meeting.
October 16th.
Sounds great.
You guys are easier than I was.
We're outnumbered.
So we have 30 minutes for public comments. And I have a person down here who came up to me at the end of the other comment and said, would I please be first? So I said, yes, what could I do? Look at his hat.
How long do I have?
Three minutes.
Would you tell me if two and a half?
Yep.
I have a solution that I want to give you.
Yep.
Hi.
I might have to do this.
That's fine. Hit me harder, because I don't feel very good about it. About 140, 150 years ago, my family moved to the Grass Valley. And that's not a medical term. My name is Brett Deshaux. Okay? They tell me the only people that were here before us were the neighbors. I don't know if that's true, it sounds. People move here from California. Somebody had to subdivide in order for you to move here. You move here and then you say, I don't want any more Californians moving here. Interesting. Okay? The state legislature said you must explore all incentives first before you move to mitigation. Mitigation is the lazy man's way. It's the easy solution. I hate the term mitigation.
Me too.
Because it denotes damages. It denotes I injured somebody. I have been feeding my military to keep us safe. I have been feeding our children. I have been feeding the poor because the poor can't feed themselves. I feed our universities so that we have technology, so that we can put a man on the moon.
So you're at two and a half minutes.
No, I want to know what I have, I'm sorry, what do I have? 30 seconds.
You have about 40 seconds. I'll give you a chance.
You'll give me 10 minutes?
10 minutes. You said you have a solution and you wanted to be sure you got to it.
Right. I only need about 30 seconds for the solution.
You're down to 30.
Okay, well, I'll get to it. The easy solution is, is to note, the federal government put in CRP programs. CRP programs are designed so you don't plant, so they can maintain price settings, so ranchers don't go broke and walk off their farms like they did in 1930. If agricultural land is important to you, you need to negotiate with the farms and ranchers payments per acre on those grounds that you feel valuable for Missoula County. If you cannot negotiate with that farmer, then those lands, those grounds aren't as important as you thought they were in the first place. The rancher gets to pay onto his land, doesn't lose his ability to get full value for his investment. How many of you invest in Apple Computer? Went up 400 or 600% in four years. I don't know that. I don't know who has that. But by God, you can look in Frenchtown and you can see my assets. You know what they're worth. You can call any realtor. I need a return on my investment. I can't get it off the 150 cows that I raise. You want me to, don't say bullshit. I caught you.
So, so I really appreciate you.
Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Well, I want to make sure you get to finish, but I, you know, I've given him the time, but we're all kind of, we're kind of tired. And I just want to make sure that you don't get insulted and that you get to say what you need to say.
Okay. That's basically what I have to say. I'm a capitalist. I know that is a bad word in Missoula County.
Doggone.
I have a degree in business finance from the University of Montana. That's how I work with things.
Thank you.
You don't like what I have to say? That's fine. I have no problem with it.
Thank you very much for waiting for the end of the meeting. Okay. Okay, we have other hands up, and I'm going to take the hands of people who have not spoken yet. And I have two people whose hands went up over here, and they did it after he had asked first term. So what I would like to do again is remind us of the ground rules. I would like you to be polite to your neighbors. You may disagree with them. If we have nothing but a hullabaloo here, it is no help for the planning board. Okay?
I think I can be helpful, I think.
And then if you would give the microphone to this gentleman.
Yeah, I still squeak, I'm sorry. I have a question for Professor Mudd. I perhaps misunderstood what you said about encouraging developers to go up in the urban area. It sounded to me like it was a penalty. Could you explain on that, please, how you plan to encourage the developers to stay in the primary urban area?
I think except for the planning board, whatever you want.
In, in 30 seconds.
Okay.
Well, the reason is because I asked if you would not try to have dialogue with the, with the presenters.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's okay, that's all right. Maybe if you ask them.
I was just asking for clarification.
Okay, would you bring, would you say the question again?
It sounded to me like the.
Microphone.
Like, it, it sounded to me like the banking or the exchange that was presented by the law clinic penalized developers when they went up in the urban area as opposed to rewarding them. And I'm seeking clarification.
Okay, I'm going to take that as a rhetorical question, and Professor Mudd would use that as something she needs to look into, so we don't open the dialogue. Okay? So if you would give the microphone to the gentleman in the turquoise shirt. Thank you for your question.
My name is Ed Taylor. I live in the Target Range area. I'm not going to take this personal at all because I, there's a lot of fear in the room tonight, seems like. And I think I just wanted to comment to the board that I appreciate the opportunity that you have given us all here tonight to receive these summary presentations. But I would like to ask the board as a whole a question. And I'm just curious of two things. One, when were you folks presented this packet of information in its entirety? And two, if it's okay with you, I'd like to see a show of hands who have read the complete packet of information.
I'll speak, I'll speak to the board. We received this complete, complete package roughly a week, week and a half ago. And I haven't read through every page. I've read, not through all of it, but the board has just looked at pictures. But I certainly didn't take it into great depth yet. But I can assure you that we'll be gone through with great depth going forward.
The only other comment, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing.
I, I do believe that you guys have a daunting task in front of you. And I think the most important, obviously, is to get some kind of continuity for the development people and the agricultural group people, so we all know what to expect in the future, so these little arguments and stuff don't take place. Thank you.
Or big arguments.
Yeah.
Correct.
Which are all valid.
I should, I should point out too, in addition to getting these packages, we have had over the past few months some early exposure presentations of in-progress of the various committees, not all of them, but a few of them. But we're, we're new at this process. I said I'd go into.
So these are all online also?
Right.
That everybody can read them? If you want a hard copy, they're, they will, you can buy them at the plant or at the Office of Rural Initiatives. And that doesn't mean like all we're outselling them, it's just that they've got to pay the $2 to print them off. So it's like two bucks or that kind of thing. But they're available to everybody. Okay, please.
My name's Valerie Staniel. I live in Victor, Montana, and my family has been farming since colonial South Carolina. And no, we didn't have slaves. They raised tea and cotton and everything else. Number one, I would like to address this as an option, that perhaps we're looking as at a patient that we believe has a sickness. And if we were in a medical environment, we would be looking to treat a number of things. I believe what you're doing with your agricultural food supply is we're attempting to solve the symptom at the end. I believe that you have a patient that's presented itself to you and you believe that if you put a cast on its arm, you may in fact help to resolve its coronary arrest. There are a lot of things going on here. By doing what we're doing with land control, you will not still allow a farmer to be able to sell enough food at the farmer's market to make a living. Am I right about that? You ain't going to make a living at the farmer's market. Number two, until we have food processing here, you're done. Right now, all of your food goes away because, future commissioner, I can tell you of five food processing plants that left here, looked at a very good opportunity to bring viable good jobs here, and said, Missoula, you're too hard to do business with. Okay? They left and they're in Idaho and North Dakota. I think that's called grain jobs. I could be wrong. I could be wrong. The third thing I'd like to point out to you is that until, and until we do something about stopping our federal government from allowing food to come in from all over, God knows where, with not one single regulation on it, that if your revenues today, you found out that we can't even make China run tests on chicken jerky for your dogs. Until we make a change in that agricultural policy, it does not matter what you do, what you do, everything that we try and do here is going to be for moot point. And if you think we don't have a problem, we got a bigger one. We're trying to put a cast on a broken arm and we're having a coronary arrest.
Thank you very much.
Well, if, if we're going to keep doing the public comments, I'm not going to do it for, we're not going to do it for applause. I asked you at the beginning, get on to the ground rules. I thought, I would have clapped for it. I mean, I thought we would clap for a number of the people here. But I don't want to create a big basketball game going on with one side or the other. Okay? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maureen Edwards, and I live on the old Flynn Ranch directly west of Missoula. About 15 years ago, my brother and sisters and I decided to put a conservation easement on the central core of the ranch because we wanted to preserve it for agricultural and historic uses. And we thought at the time that it would be an easy thing to do to protect the land, you know, just going to keep it, we're just going to save it. It has been so difficult and so expensive. And so I'm really glad to see that we're beginning to open up our ideas that preservation isn't necessarily a bad thing. And I'm glad to see it happening, you know, at least the discussions coming into county. I think right now, the social and the government ways of looking at land use is geared heavily toward development. And it hasn't hurt us in a lot of ways. And I want to give you just two examples so that you understand why we really do need to have this discussion. A few years ago, the sewer was put out on Mullin Road. And Marge will tell you, she told you how much everybody was required to pay. Now, thank God, I know you don't like conservation easements, thank God we had it, because we could not have afforded the taxes and we would have lost the land. But what happened is there were people there, ones that want to sell their land, that's great, you know, because eventually they'll make their money, I think, hopefully. It's a long ways coming though. But there are people who did not want to sell their land, who wanted to keep it. So I called the commissioners and I said, you know, this is forcing some of the farmers to sell their land. And my, the response was, yes, we discussed that and we're okay with that. You know, development's going out the way of Mullin Road, people might as well just get used to it. And so this is an attitude I want to see changed. We do want to, we want to preserve our land, we want to protect it, but it's really hard when development seems to be the prior issue. And I'm, I'm just glad that we're talking about preservation as well as development.
Thank you very much. I've got two hands, I have three hands over here, people that haven't spoken yet. And we have 17 minutes to go.
Okay, I'll be quick. Hi, my name is Stephanie LaPorte-Potts. I live at 2009 South Eighth Street West in Missoula. And first of all, I just want to thank you and for everybody else who's come out here, spent all this time tonight to talk and have this discussion, because it's a discussion that we need to have. It's important. And what I've learned the most from this conversation that we've been having is that we're not all that far off. Everybody agrees that, you know, we need to have things like processing facilities in Missoula. We need to have a better food economy. We need to have a stronger local food system. Those things, all these happen, but if we want to have a strong local food system, we have to have land to grow the food on. It's, you know, we, I like the fact that I can buy local chicken, turkey things from, I don't know what they're called, but the treats I give my cat, I can get them locally. It's awesome. I don't have to buy it from China because we have local agricultural land in Montana. If the land's gone, we're relying on those international systems. I did some interesting calculation when Niva had her numbers up about the farmland loss that they calculated in the report. I was born in 1986. That's the year that they started to use average as well. I, I have a lot of future in front of me. I have dirty hands right now. I spend my day in the dirt. I want to do it for the rest of my life. But since the day that I was born, on average, we've lost three football fields of agricultural land in Missoula every single day of my life. I want to see that trend stopped. And I thank you for finally taking up this charge and getting on to that, because local food feeds us and we can't have local food without local partner. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ken Jenkins. I'd like to thank the planning board for taking this on. It's a complicated subject. Just have a couple of quick things to say. One is about fairness, and I hope that's considered. You can have two farmers side by side and one of them has provided incentives to retain the ag land. And maybe the farmer next to him decides to do a subdivision, and that farmer is penalized. At the end of the day, if the goal is to preserve the ag land, how can you compensate one person and take away from another? Taking a man's land is as un-American as anything I can think of. Second thing I'd like to say is if we're going to compensate, if we're going to provide incentives, it's going to take money. It takes money out of the tax base and it increases the need for tax dollars. And both sides of the issue are pretty well represented here tonight. sides of the issue are pretty well represented here tonight, and the people that aren't well represented here are the general public, the people that own the land that are going to be affected by this. People don't pay attention to any of this stuff until it happens to them, and I think this, one way or another, needs to get on the ballot for the public. If saving ag land is important to the public, it's going to cost money, and should be on the ballot, then we'll find out how important it really is to the public. The two sides of the special interest groups that are so well represented here tonight aren't representative necessarily of the general public that'll be most affected by this. It affects housing affordability, it'll affect the tax base, it'll affect the taxes that we pay, you know, potentially what comes out of this could have huge impacts on the public, and they're not here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alicia Vanderheiden, I'm a member of the Open Lands Committee, and I've participated in the discussions to date. I'm here tonight as a landowner and a resident of Potomac. I believe the county is at a critical juncture, and has before it an opportunity to take a stand in support of our community's agricultural heritage for the benefit of our children's children. Agricultural land is a finite resource, once it's gone, we can't get it back. Ag lands are some of the last vestiges of large contiguous private lands that provide landscape-scale benefits for our wild and human communities alike, and it has shaped our community and values. I agree with the realtors that agriculture should not be discussed for the first time at subdivision hearings. That's what makes the creation of an agricultural policy more timely and important today. Development is important for our region to thrive. We are lucky to live here, and others should have that opportunity, but it doesn't have to happen at the expense of the little critical ag land remaining in the county. The plethora of tools an ag policy could provide, such as the banking of development rights, can ensure that we can meet the needs of both agriculture and development in our county, instead of working at cross purposes. Many other county, states, and countries, as we've heard, have successfully planned to maintain a high quality of life that is economically diverse and honors the role and needs of agriculture. I'm confident that we too can create ag policies that meet the goal of ag preservation within a framework that is socially acceptable. I strongly support the development of an ag policy from Missoula County that includes both incentives and mitigation measures, for as research shows, incentives alone are not enough to assure the future of ag lands for our community. I'm really excited that you guys have offered this opportunity for everybody to talk, and I'm hearing a lot of really great ideas, and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Josh, I have to go over here, 'cause I have to, I can't, you would just be a pet if I picked you.
My name is Gene Melstead, and I've been a longtime Missoula resident, and I'm one of those nasty builder developers of the Missoula built housing. A couple of things that I would like the board to take into consideration in some of the comments I've heard tonight, and probably the one that's come up the most is the banking of the development rights. And some of the people, at least I know there's one person on the board that has been through the process with the city incentivizing the developers with rights, and it was when we were being given incentives, density incentives, to extend city sewer in certain areas. And if you, what we have seen in the past is that when, if you bank, like if I was to bank these rights and try to put them somewhere else, then I'm gonna have to fight with the neighborhood where I wanna go, because they're not gonna want those incentives put on that particular piece of ground. And that's what's happened to us a lot, and that's why the incentive for extending sewers was demolished, because the neighborhoods just got too mad about it, and the city finally had to get rid of it, because they were pissing everyone off.
So to speak.
So don't do incentives or banking and things like that, and not look at the other side and understand the history of the past of what's already happened in Missoula. 'Cause there's a long, long history with the neighborhood associations being, you know, very active in Missoula, and you might say, "Well, yeah, you can go use them over there," but when you go over there, you can't. And another good example of that is when the city extended the sewer down Third Street and wanted to increase density along the road, and the neighborhood didn't want it. So, and another thing that I would like to see is that when you do a presentation up here, and you show, and they're saying that this is a cooperative effort on a subdivision, I would like to hear the landowners' side of that, because I've been in that situation, and says, "Ben's cooperative, Ben's..." Not really. Thank you.
So, there's been a request to kinda do a clarification on the thing that's up here, and I'm gonna do that at the very end at 9:30. But what I don't wanna, if we are reaching a point where we're starting to kind of evaluate among us the possible options, I think that's another meeting. That's a time when the planning board and the staff would like to see you do that kind of thing, but I would like to ask if there are any other comments that would sort of, like Gene just did, be cautionary about this, et cetera, so we don't get into the back-and-forth about what was cooperative or what wasn't, et cetera. I've got time for like three more.
My name is Gloria Rourke, my husband and I have a ranch in Green Hill, and we only found out about this whole process the first of the year, and I understand it was going on for two years. Every rancher, every landowner should've been notified of it. The Open Lands Board is not balanced. I'd say it's more pro-environmental than, you know, those that choose not to take easements on their property or want easements. We don't know very little, I know nothing about anybody on the planning board, how much land you own, what you do for a living. I know Jerry, he lives down the road from us, but I really don't know much about Jerry at all. And I think somebody needs to come in and make a presentation about conservation easements, and what the unintended consequences are of them, not just a study from the law school, but somebody who can tell you that conservation easements can be bought by other groups, other entities, that a conservation easement takes away your private property rights, and what all the ramifications of conservation easements are. And dangling money like a carrot over a rancher who might be having some hardships, I think is very poor indeed, because agriculture is the main state of this nation, and founded by this nation, our constitutional rights are being violated. So I'd like these people to introduce themselves, tell us how much land they own, and what they do for a living, and if they're retired, what they did when they weren't retired. Thank you.
I looked at your name thing, and I knew your name wasn't Mark Brady.
Thank you for that, I don't have a...
I'm teasing you. So, so I'm not gonna get into all of that tonight, we only have five minutes to go. All right, but, I'm coming. The other thing is that the planning boards, who they are and that kind of business, you can find out some of that online as well. I'm not trying to shut you down, I only have time to do it.
Some people don't have computers, do they?
True, true. I'm sorry to make that assumption.
I'm John Flohr, I live out in Potomac, we have my two sisters, and I have a small ranch out there that we kind of inherited, we just paid it off about two years ago. And I told my sisters in the beginning, I'd give it 10 years, and I'd give it my best effort, and at the end of 10 years, if I couldn't make a living there, we subdivided and we could all three retire then. Well, the 10 years is up, and I've put my own money into the ranch every year, et cetera, last year. And this year, I'm gonna have to put, depending on the cattle market, but it's looking like I'll have to put more of my own money in there again. But I like to deal in facts rather than some nostalgia of a truck farm, and what do they call it, where do you buy fresh? Farmer's market, of a year gone by. We don't have farmer's markets, we shouldn't, there's basically, it's a non-factor, in fact, we use less than 1% of the food that's consumed in Missoula County is purchased from a local grower. The other 99% is purchased at Walmart and Safeway. So, as far as mitigation for subdivision, it's pointless, because the very government that is swearing to protect the farmland, in 2010 shut the water off to the Central Valley of California, dried up thousands of acres of orchards and farmland, forcing fifth-generation growers to stack their orchards with excavators and burn them. Now today, in California, there's a 12% unemployment rate, and the farmers are having trouble finding workers to get the crops out of the field. 12% unemployment, finding, hard time finding workers. Okay. Now, as far as the mitigation and all of the land, and just leave us alone. I don't want any government doing anything with the land that we own. If you want land, buy the broken old ranch in Fairfield, there's a better climate, there's more irrigated acres there on that one ranch than the entire Missoula Valley. Come on. All the water you can use, all the land you can ever farm, and every person in here that wants to be a farmer could have their own center pivot. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Will you take one last comment over here, and then we'll close, it'll be 9:30?
I said I'm here till midnight, but I'm really tired.
You haven't been to very many of these meetings, then.
Oh, I have no idea.
My name's John Richards, and I just have a couple of questions for the planning board to consider. If somebody wanted to come in to mitigate where your house was built, and said, "We want a 1:1 minimum ratio," and they took a chainsaw and cut your house in half and took it, do you think you'd stand still, or do you think you'd have an argument and squawk? I think you guys need to really consider what's going on here. You're talking about taking people's land without any compensation. Thank you.
I'll take it as long as it's not a rebuttal. Okay? All right, you're gonna do a nice close, we're gonna finish, and I have seven children, I have to go to bed at night when it's really nice. So, here you are.
Last one.
That was such a nice short comment. My name is Annie Heiser, I'm here with the Community Food and Agriculture Coalition, and I just wanna ask you to consider one more thing that I'm a little surprised didn't come up in the discussion so far as much as I kind of thought it would, which is private property rights. Because private property rights is something that's really important to me, and I would assume is probably something that's really important to a lot of people in this room. And I think what I would ask you to consider is what we mean when we think about private property rights. Because, you know, a lot of times in the news what we hear about is people who believe that private property rights give you the right to do absolutely whatever you wanna do on your land. And unfortunately, or fortunately, that's just not the way that we as a nation have decided over and over again over time that that's what property rights mean. Property rights means that I have the right to do whatever I want on my land so long as it doesn't impact the ability of other people to use their land. And private property rights means a lot of other things. It means, you know, understanding, respecting that there's local knowledge, recognizing the importance of individual responsibility and accountability, recognizing the need for personal prosperity and financial stability, and those are all things that can be addressed by the options that have been raised tonight. My, to me, the thing that would have the greatest negative impact on our private property rights in this county would be doing nothing, or not doing enough to preserve agriculture in Missoula County, to protect the future of agriculture in Missoula County. Because let's think about this, right now, most people in this county are planning on selling their land at some point, and that's completely understandable. And I think, you know, to many people, like many people mentioned already tonight, their land is their retirement, and that is completely understandable, and I appreciate that. But what that means for the rest of us is that at some point, if all of those people end up developing their land, there won't be enough agricultural land left in Missoula County to maintain a viable agricultural economy. It means that if we don't create some real safeguards right now to make sure that there's enough agricultural land around, we're not gonna have enough producers to keep a tractor dealership, or meat processors, or food distributors, and we've lost a lot of those already, but we're gonna close the door on future economic opportunities if we don't have the land. So the real impact on private property rights here, my last thing, would be allowing some people to develop their land however they wanna do it, without considering the massive negative impacts that that'll have on all the other landowners who wanna maintain their private property right to use their land for farming. So that's what these policies are about, thinking about the future of farming. And thanks so much for all you're doing, and hoping to get to it. Thanks.
Thank you. So, when you said you haven't done very many of these meetings, I'm thinking about the fact that I've lived here a long time, and I, if I was somebody from somewhere else and I heard all these comments, I have a hard time thinking about who I disagree with. Because all of these things are interests that people have, and they're all part of your lives, no matter who you are. What's happened now is we're down to values, and values are harder to deal with than creating policy. So I think these guys have a heck of a job to do, and I wanna, Bob, do you wanna do a real quick clarification, and then I'm closing it, because they have a little business meeting they have to finish.
I represent the, I'm the real estate agent that represents this property. This is what I know about this property. The FEMA came in to change the floodplain, and took all of this that was once geared toward residential and turned it into floodplain. There's a spot here for a building, right about here, a house, it's the only high spot on that knob that actually falls pretty much out of the floodplain. This was repairing an area that we had discussed possibly taking and doing something with to protect the wildlife and the waterfall that are in that area, as for the auto fire wishes, no issue there, but to be honest with you, this would not have ever been in negotiation with CPAC if we didn't have any other opportunity to do something different with it, but once it became floodplain, we didn't have any other options, so.
Thank you. So, what I'd like to have you do is, I don't care who you're sitting next to, would you turn to the person on your left and turn to the person on your right and shake their hand and tell them thank you tonight?
[laughter]
Thank you for coming, please give yourself a hand. Thank you.
[applause][1786.53]